Hand Dodge, and I think that thing got close to three hundred thousand miles. Until it just finally died. It was just costing way too much money to keep on putting into it, but. And this is another situation where, from my understanding, the truck runs absolutely good. I spoke to, um, the director of the Public Works Department in the county, and with the executives, well, they both said the truck is very roadworthy.
But somebody from some amount of rent looked at it?
Yeah. I mean.
Thank you.
When it says free, I can assure you that's got my name over it. They're just simply going to, I mean, they're giving us such a bar, they're not even asking us for a dollar, which is usually the, uh. So I'll make the necessary motion for Resolution seventy-one twenty-two one. Is there a second? All in favor?
Right.
Aye, and opposed? Next, we have, um, cancel the current fund reserve balance that I do have here. Seventy-seven, seventy-two, twenty-two one.
These are housekeeping items I talked with the auditor today to help clean up our audit that's being prepared. So both of these ordinances do that.
Are they in the drive?
No, see, you can add them as an email, and they're not the drive.
They're not in the drive either?
No.
So every time I do this, I go right through the drive and put this in, I can't imagine that it's not.
Guys, I hate to tell you, but I think it's far more simpler if we have a paper copy of all this stuff here, and then we have it. And then we have it.
I think it's a good idea when you have things like this, that you take, you look over it, you research it, you figure out what's going on, you make sure you understand everything. To just to vote on something just because it's just in front of you, I don't think is ever a good idea.
Well, we do our homework on this stuff, I mean, this is.
But not if we just got it tonight, there's no homework to be done.
I'm not going to question the clerk's performance here, he gave this to us tonight, we're looking at it, I mean, it's a housekeeping item, and he's just simply going to change eighty-five, hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents, and it's just going to be moved over.
Is this stuff that money was received and money was spent?
Yes, the grants have been closed out, and so now, at the end of every audit period, we go through it and say, okay, it's not necessary to have this as part of the book, so this is a formal thing to just to cancel out the balances.
And the work's been done?
Everything's been done, closed out, yeah.
So we take this action at the recommendation of the auditor?
Yes.
If somebody makes a motion?
I'll make a motion to support Resolution seventy-two dash twenty-two one. Is there a second? Second, just for purposes of discussion. So then was this, is, and I mean, this is a question, is this an item that was included in the audit report that was discussed at the closing meeting and that kind of stuff?
No, this was, uh, done before that. The audit, and all is going to be given out at the September meeting. So I had a conversation with the auditor today on a number of different things, just the housekeeping things, he said we need to do a north, uh, resolution on it, and this as well, I can give them on for tonight's if we want to. If you guys want to hold off, that's fine, that's totally up to you guys.
This is all in the financial ways, I'll defer to her wisdom.
I don't feel comfortable with anything that's giving you the night up to, that's just me personally. I, I would like to look at it and ask questions to you and discuss it.
That's fine.
But if council wants to move forward, that, that's fine, I will just abstain.
I say we hold off and then, because I don't know why, I, everything, I go down to this agenda and I copy it and put it on Google Docs, so I'm going to check and find out why it's on my docs and just. Make sure, because I, I.
If you want, for now, when you add something, throw me a text and say, hey, I just said, I just put X, Y, Z document there, and I can go and look at it and make sure.
Yeah, because I.
And then this way, that won't happen to them forward.
Right, because I, I, because if I had a confirmation, you know, you know, from, yeah, or just you yourself, you could help me out.
I didn't want to have it.
Do that, yeah, thank you, yeah. Alright, so we'll just hold off on these two, mayor.
Okay, I would follow my motion. With the second or?
I would throw my second.
Thank you. Next, we have, um, seventy-three, I guess, we're going to cancel that one for tonight?
Yes, yeah, both, both of them.
Okay, we have the department reports, which would be the July twenty-twenty-one of the City Court, the Municipal Court, Tax Collector, the Fire Company, the Public Works, and the zoning office.
I don't have the court, I did get the Tax Collector line, we were in this meeting, so.
I have the zoning report.
I have the zoning, I have the Public Works, I have a fire company, I believe I have a Tax Collector, but I did not get a municipal report, but I did get a clerk's office.
And you, you don't have a Tax Collector because it's sitting out there in my chair, even though it was tonight.
I only have the public works.
Yeah, the Fire Company and the zoning came in late, there was an issue with the reports on the zoning where there was some duplication, so that had to be cleaned up, so you may not have that, that much.
Did you guys get a chief's report?
I sent that out before the meeting.
Everybody's got a chief's report?
Yes.
I have the zoning officer's report, if you'd like me to read it, I mean, what we discussed in our meeting earlier this evening. Council would like me to read it.
Is there a reason why each month you've been doing this lately, you have to read the zoning officer's report?
Yes, and you know what the reason is, come on.
What's the reason?
You know what the reason is.
No, I just care if you know.
I'm the liaison between the mayor and council and the zoning officer.
We need to discuss that stuff in close.
Yeah, okay. So would you like me to read the report, or not?
You're going to do it anyway, so go ahead.
Okay, so we've discussed six avenue, there isn't any more to add on that, except that the court had been canceled. Tharp on South River Road is still uncompliant, uh, as it relates to cars, trash, and debris, but he's now scheduled for court in September. I don't know why he's not scheduled in August. Berada on Fifty is, has pretty much not changed, he's still not compliant with unregistered vehicles and debris, slowly making progress, his court was also canceled in July, and he'll, he's expected to be heard again in August. One thirty-five Ninth Avenue, uh, would, has forwarded a properly completed zoning permit application, which he denied, which the zoning officer denied. He is confident that they will appeal his denial and, you know, more to follow on that. One twenty-three Cumberland Avenue is making progress slowly, but they are making progress, uh, removing debris from the building that was demolished, per our instruction. Number six.
What's outside, I'm sorry, the contest meeting, which, which street?
One twenty-three Cumberland Avenue. One thirty Route Fifty, uh, house there, I think, was moved, they put a basement under it, put it back, and then instead of putting back a porch, exactly as was there before, they increased the size of the porch exponentially by some multiple of what it used to be, and Mr. Carrignato can demonstrate that clearly through satellite photography, so, uh, I believe he's going to cite them for not having permits, and so that will, yeah, they're going to need a zoning permit. Given that this, the proximity to Route Fifty and that kind of stuff, I'm, that's a tough nut to crack, you've seen it, right? We've all driven past it. I wondered about that myself, that's a.
Years ago, that was a block building, a very square block building, and I believe, if my memory serves me right, uh, that used to be called the Curve Restaurant.
Uh, okay.
Is that be right, Jeff?
Yep.
That was the Curve Restaurant. I don't believe everyone went in the D, maybe not even went around then, but it was a curved restaurant, that was Guy Shear, brother, God rest his soul.
At one seventy-six Route Fifty, uh, the zoning officer cited them for two violations, two maintenance violations, one being sanitation, the other being, uh, the grass. Good, air, and I, I, I guess I'd forgotten our, just for the edification of all listening, our local ordinance requires that grass be kept eight inches or lower. Apparently, and on Second Avenue, the zoning officer is investigating someone cutting a road back into a, a lot there, and there's no, best of his knowledge, there's been no permit pull, there's no, uh, posting of the block, block number or anything like that.
I see a very serious situation, and just this month alone, I received four phone calls from residents that are quite disturbed about one seventy-six Route Fifty. The old Gem Refrigeration, the place has turned into a disaster, an absolute disaster.
You sent them two violations?
You sent them two?
Yeah, that's what I said, it's one seventy-six Route Fifty.
What are the violations, do you know?
One was, the maintenance violations, one for sanitation and the other for grass.
I mean, there's a storage upon storage, it's just, the place is just so unlikely, not to mention that it's a scenic corridor route through our city, it's a main corridor, that's my map. That just should not be, that place is now being done.
Okay.
I think we have the same problem with that property that we do with that first one. There's no, with the other issues on six, is there's no, nobody's got teeth. It used to be, you sent them to court, and there were repercussions there, but they don't even have to go to court.
Well, they gotta go to court, they're just playing what's called convenient stupidity.
I'm saying they don't, there's no bench warrant, right? If there's no bench warrant, what's the incentive for any of these violators to show up at court?
You just answered your own question.
Right, there's none.
Yeah, I, this is asking just for record, I'm not asking that. You know, I, I believe we should have, um, enforcement within our community, and right now, we have a toothless tiger. That we, you know, we can issue summons, but there's going to be no enforcement of the summons, and that's just the way that it is. We have a situation on South River where, um, that has been operating as a junkyard.
You can Google right back.
Since as long as I've known, and there's another property right across the street, it's got a couple residences that are going on that property. Makeshift residences. With plural, not one, but seven.
Where's that?
South River Road, check it out.
There are, is housing being placed on property?
Well, let's just put it this way, there are two structures in which you have two sheds that are combined together into one, with a, um, stack coming out where they heat it, and they're living in it. And then you have another ones behind that, the same identical situation, and then there's a trail, it appears as somebody's living in that, but.
What's the address?
Right across from Freddie Tharp. Right dead across.
I think this was the, uh, if I remember correctly, the zoning officer has done all that he can with this, and he further, he can't enter the premises without the state police. He doesn't have the authority to walk inside a building, he doesn't, he can't tell from the street or from standing in the yard whether the, uh, the structures are being used for housing or being used for storage.
He has a state fire marshal, and quite frankly, I was looking into putting a wood stove in my garage, and when I found out all the requirements of what I would have to do, such as have a five-inch thick fire-rated block, and so on and so on and so on, you can't have any storage of any kind of gas product, not a fire, not nothing, so I figured, hey, why even bother with that? Just have to be that, heat it, while heating the different means, one of the doors, however, the fire marshal, the state fire marshal clearly can do something. It's obvious, it's not like it's hidden, they have a stack coming right out of the building, they took two shacks and combined them together into one.
But that's not, that wouldn't be a zoning matter.
That's certainly a zoning matter, I think there are people that are living in it.
It's a construction, well, you don't, he can't prove that it's being used for housing if he can't go inside. The fact that there's a stack coming out, there's an construction.
My understanding is he's gone in about two years ago, and he said, yes, there's a couch in there, yes, there's running electric going into the building, yes, there's all kinds of stuff, he says, but do I live that they're living in it?
Right.
I says, well, if they're heating it, I says, do they have the data to take out a fire permit? To put that stove in, you have to take out a monitor for it. They didn't do it. They're just doing whatever they want to do, I mean, that's pretty much the norm in this town, people do it. Seems like it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is to ask for information.
What do you want to do about it?
I, I'm not going to do anything about it, we have zoning officers, if he's not going to do anything about it, then that's going to be another issue.
It sounds to me more like a matter for the housing official or a construction official.
It's all of the above, housing, zoning, and property. Let's move on, let's move on. I'm not going to discuss any zoning officers.
I am done with my report. Can I get a motion to accept it, please?
There was a motion, and there was a second, all in favor of the reports excluding the municipal court and the, you know, tax collectors.
Excluding the municipal court.
Uh, second. We don't have a court, a municipal court, we don't have a tax collector report, we have a fire, Public Works, zoning officer, and a clerk's office report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Down, old biz, business, we have a report on GovDeals, Verizon Bill, and DPW Doors, Jeff, I guess you put that on the agenda here, so go ahead.
Yeah, just want to bring you up to date. Uh, there were some, five items that we had for sale of GovDeals. To council, we were around thirty-five hundred, talking about the bucket truck, Jeff and I decided to ask for five thousand. Somebody from Florida came up with a vote of four, four thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. The payers went for one thousand, two hundred twenty-five, which is about a dollar a paver, somewhere in that area.
That's a good deal.
There was a sweeper, a broom, that's been out there for years, we said, well, we put that on there, but you guys did authorize, we said two hundred, and we got two hundred.
So we got that?
Yeah, well, we didn't think we'd even get that, but.
It's probably worth more than that junk. No, we had it out for fifteen hundred, nobody cared.
Yeah.
Plus five hundred with brush.
And there's, there's no playoff. There was something in there that we had started out with five hundred on that, we decided to up it to three thousand, and someone's driving from Pennsylvania one Saturday, they buy it for nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That's about the.
Yeah, so, and no one else, um, that was the highest bid.
Well, that's good news.
So, I don't know, we're close to six thousand dollars, now they take seven and a half percent, that's what the company charges, plus an additional five percent to collect the money and do all the paperwork. So, we clean up the, uh, Public Works yard after all these years.
I notice a little, a little empty in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all the same, it's all good.
Yeah.
Now they need to be paid.
And there's still chainsaw parts that we said twenty dollars, and we didn't get any offers below ten, and so, I think after that, we're going to just.
I think by resolution, we could just simply throw it away.
Yeah, just throw, yeah, we just put it on there to think that maybe somebody around here might need the parts, but.
What's the Verizon bill with the, um, the doors?
Uh, the Verizon, I mentioned to you several meetings ago, that our bill jumped from generally around five hundred and fifty dollars to over eight thousand dollars.
A month?
For one month.
One month.
Say that again.
Every month?
No, it went from five hundred and, we usually pay around five hundred, six hundred dollars a month.
For the Verizon, which is, what, what bill?
For the phone bill for City Hall.
And one month, it was eight grand?
Eight grand.
Why?
Because somebody hacked into our system and made about six and seven thousand dollars of calls to, uh, some city in Africa. So I spent hours dealing with Verizon, I mean, I was pulling my hair out in this place, I can't stand it, I got bounced around so much, I think one day I spent half of all four hours. You ever had to deal with them, I mean, they just take you from one person to the next person, and you start over, and they're giving me a number that I already called three thousand, bottom line is.
Sounds like state government.
Yes.
Like being in a, spins like one of the, uh, uh, dryer, you know?
It was horrible, mayor, and so we got ahold of someone, I started to email, this, this lady said that she would hand off, which she never did, but I kind of like got on her so bad that she pushed it through the next level. And they put me into a fraud unit, which, if it wasn't for, they sent us a letter, they didn't tell us right away that they, they actually shut off all our long-distance calls. That, that's how we kind of discovered this before we got the bill, so there's no long-distance calls, so that means you can't make a call at eight-five-six or some living number. So, uh, but nobody could even help me with that, until I actually got the fraud number, and then called them, and then told them what was going on, and then they could deal with it. So then they said, look, I, we, we understand what's going on, but we're not going to give you this credit until you fix your phones. So I called Max Communication, and the guy came down like within forty-five minutes, and went in our system, and there were two lines where there wasn't any precautions or something to block it, you know, to block the numbers, so if you fix that for us, they needed to see that letter, we sent the letter to them, and probably within three weeks, I got correspondence that they're going to credit us for seven thousand, six hundred and three dollars.
Very good, well done, Jeff.
Oh my gosh.
You have their relatives in Nigeria, right?
I, yeah, I didn't know who was.
Did they hack up from somewhere else? They weren't.
Not four, they weren't here.
Somewhere else, they had to.
You could have told me, you told me again and again and again you were on the phone for an hour and a half, but this one, in forty-five minutes of halting, you could have told me it was fixed, you never told me it was fixed, you told me all the pain you had.
Well, and that was, I, I got this July twenty-sixth, so, very painful.
Good, very good.
And, thank you, and the garage doors, believe it or not, aren't on our site. They're not up yet, but that's been a long, drawn-out process, the guy called me about a month ago, he says, guess what, I finally got your doors. They didn't ship them with any springs, which.
That's like almost a year.
Yeah, almost a year, yeah, and then he calls me the other day and says, now the center rails aren't missing. Well, he's explaining that this is happening with all his jobs, like nothing's right, the parts aren't here, things aren't right, do the best we can, so. They're going to try to get them up, maybe Thursday or Friday, or, they're in our building, put it that way.
Okay, good.
So we got that.
Thank you.
Just an update.
Count of this discussion, uh, I just want council to know that our loss will now be most likely May's Landings game, the Harbor Township's game, or Galway Township's game, I think there's one over town in Atlantic County in the book that popped in.
Atlantic City.
Yes, Atlantic City is another one, but Atlantic City, I'm not so sure about cultivation, that's going to be for sales, we were not doing sales, and we were going to be making an astronomical number, not just somebody to have it for Galway City, we would have no, no play in it, none of that whatsoever. It would have been very problematic, and I'm adamantly opposed to having any type of cannabis shop in this town, but just something for cultivation, that was, that was a no-brainer, we lost. And there's only going to be thirty-seven licenses issued, and what's going to end up happening now is that, uh, these towns that have their ordinance that are in place, there's most likely going to be at least a thousand people going to be applying for a license, and now they already know that if they get a license, which town they're going to be going to, and they're not going to sit there with their engine idling, waiting to see if Eston Madder's going to have an ordinance, because, quite honestly, guys, it's over, we lost. Not going to happen, there ain't going to be no hundreds.
What is the discussion to be? Before you're making statements, what, this says count of this discussion.
That's the best discussion that I'm, that I'm giving, Mr. Deutch.
That's, you're making Atlantic statements, that's not a discussion.
That, they're all factuals.
What are we discussing?
A lot of things we could discuss, Mr. Deutch.
The only town, the only city in Atlantic County, New Jersey, that qualifies for a first-round license is Egg Harbor Township, because they already have a medical dispenser. Otherwise, there is no town in the county of Atlantic that qualifies for a license within the first two years.
Somewhere along the line, somewhere.
Two years. You're discussing this as though it's something that we could actually have done, when in fact, it's like saying we blew the chance to have a nuclear power plant in the city of Eston Madder. There's no chance anybody's going to put a nuclear power plant in Eston Madder, there's no chance anybody's going to have a recreational cannabis cultivation facility in the city of Eston Madder for at least two years.
You know that is a fact.
It's the law. Like you said, they're going to do thirty-seven licenses, the first twenty-four go to existing medical marijuana facilities, the next thirteen go to companies that are already operating in other places and can prove that they know what they're doing. We don't have any such opportunity in the city of Eston Madder, and we never have.
That was your opinion, that is not a fact.
That is the absolute fact, we're going to move on. Now we're going to move on.
I would just also like to say, I would like to also just add, I didn't know that you were going to bring a letter that was supporting you, or else I could have brought you some letters and messengers that I got, texts that I got, that supported the four of us for turning it down. So it's not a thing of who's right, who's wrong, it's just a difference of opinion.
Well, you can bring it next time.
Overtakes, overtakes.
I have to, I'm.
I still have one more thing on old business. Um, the vaccination event was successful, um, we had seven people show up, which doesn't sound like a lot of people, but the people from the health department who facilitated it said it was awful, because usually they get one person. So, um, they are actually coming back on August twenty-fifth, from four to six, for whoever needed the second shot, and whoever wants to get the first shot, they didn't have that available.
Thank you.
And that is already on the website.
Moving down the line here with new business, I think we beat up the Sixth Avenue ordeal till the cows will come home, or maybe in this case here, till the bulls come home, but, um, that issue has been covered already. Another item of new business that I want to bring before I fail to mention, uh, we have a couple of openings on the planning board. Carol in Whittlesworth is going to be, uh, on our planning board, and Mr. Spurrier asked this, but our secretary has expressed an interest to, via voting, participating in the, that can be, that's, that. We did have that here many years ago, where the planning board secretary was actually really, really involved.
He has a planning board secretary, otherwise needs secretary to be a member, and that's obviously a ten. And it seems probably the point of that, yeah, we can be a member of the board and secretary.
Okay, so, Rachel Reel's also going to be a, uh, serving member of the board, as well as, continues down as our secretary. Sale of land, I'm not sure what this one here is.
Second Amendment?
I'm sorry, Second Amendment? Somebody has to have that on here, so, please, discuss. The Second Amendment, I mean, there has been a discussion on it, and someone has requested to have this, have some agenda, so is there anything for, let's just, uh?
Well, I think she spoke during the, uh, public comment. Didn't Mr. Lafferty do a report on that?
Um, as far as I know, if I can remember correctly, Mr. Lafferty looked into it, and he was going to give us his opinion. I think that was before, um, definitely before he was on council, and it may have been before Joe was on council.
It was, it was right before COVID, it kind of got shut down with COVID, with this COVID shutdown.
Can we put it under old business to have him?
Give us the.
Yeah, whatever it is he did.
So, we're going to table this here until the next month, but, yeah. What is the sale of land, because I'm not really sure about this one?
That's something you had asked that the gentleman wanted to play.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, how about it again? We have, uh, Mr. Carmine, who wanted to purchase some property, and it is assessed at one figure, however, we sold land to a couple, Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez, I believe, to the best of my knowledge, they bought nine lots and they paid nine hundred dollars. That was four months ago, was it? Five months ago?
Well, I think when we last, we discussed, we were going to talk to the taxes assessor.
The taxes assessor says that what we can do is that it's our call, we can set whatever price that you want to do. He's not going to tell us what price, the taxes assessor has it assessed at X amount of dollars, but the question is, and I even asked, well, how did you come up with that thing?
Commercial.
When did, when did he tell you?
I like to make a joke about that, too.
So why didn't you, if that was the case, why didn't you inform the rest of council of that?
What am I supposed to inform?
That you discussed it with him and he said.
I'm bringing, I'm bringing it up as to what we could do, or we're not going to do anything, it's one of the two. I mean, Mr. Carmine has made an offer, and he said he's okay with that offer, we have to, uh, we could either accept that, we could, uh, honor and sell from what we sold other lots, same identical size, twenty-five by seventy-five foot.
So it's the custom of Eston Madder, if you first come, first serve, somebody wants to buy lots, you're selling them.
No, if you are a contiguous landowner, Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez, they live all the way down here on Route Fifty, and then they have a six-screamed, very small, and they have, uh, they have a very small lot, seven years ago, they added some municipal lots on the property, because it's contiguous, and that was all the money that they had at the time, and now there were some more lots that they wanted to pick up, and they purchased them, and we sold them for a hundred bucks a piece, that's what they offered, that's what we accepted. So, Mr. Carmine apparently must have gotten something a little bit incorrect, because it was sent to him four hundred dollars a piece as what it was sold the last time, and he thought it was four hundred dollars a piece. But either way, he said he's okay, if it's going to be four hundred dollars, okay, all right. So council has a decision. So council has a decision, do we wanna sell the property and just simply put it back onto our tax rolls, and um, it serves no purpose for the city to own it whatsoever.
So is this a gentleman, forgive me for interrupting you, is this a gentleman that, that submitted a handwritten note last month?
Yes.
Can we recall that note, please?
Yep, it's right here.